Hi, Joe. We have met the supervisors' meeting of July 15 and August 6. Do I hear a motion to accept them?
No, I was only at one meeting.
If you could hang on for one second, I get my hands on it. I think there's one thing that I need to clarify in the reg meeting. On the first page, in the first bolded...
What meeting was that, July 15? Okay, I was not there, but go ahead.
Well, so you were there, you called me, you were.
I mean, you were there.
Oh, sorry, I missed.
So, the first bolded paragraph is Mr. Henniker noted the minutes of June 26, 2013, and July 2, 2013 meetings. The approved is distributed by Mr. Stevenson, seconded the motion, and it carried with both supervisors in favor. I think it should be with all supervisors in favor. Three is more than both.
Right.
The rest of it is fine.
He has...
Seconded the motion.
And you're going to vote for one or...
I'll vote for one, that's the other one in favor.
That's accepted. Hold on a second. Lisa, you're on, on the manager's report, please.
We have created a draft rental ordinance, which is on our website for review. It will go into the planning commission for review as well, so it will be quite a while before it's prepared to without. So if anybody has any comments on it, please forward them to us. We purchased a vehicle from Mole Fire Company, an Explorer, for $3,500. It's going to be the co-official vehicle. All the decals and lights and everything have been removed off the vehicle, and it's ready to use. And we had to install a radio to communicate with the road crew and police and free com, who installs our radios, gave us a free radio since they have a program running now. Every fourth radio, you get free. So that was nice.
You want to go over the presentation?
So I apologize that our audiovisual system isn't working. Unfortunately, we found out that when there's power outage, there's some switch that messes up and it won't work. So we're going to get it fixed. But I put copies out of this, so hopefully everybody can follow along. So this is the six-month financial report. If you go to the first page, it's just the cover sheet. The second page is the balance sheet. So you can see our total assets of $20,755,598, which includes our fixed assets. On the next page, we have the six-month summary of the general fund. Our revenues were $1.54 million, which is 18 percent less than last year, 4 percent less than the budget. Expenses were $1.73 million, 30 percent greater than last year, 2 percent higher. The main reason for the decrease in our revenue is because of the tax cut. We had budgeted to receive $321,000 in taxes this year, but since the taxes were cut 50 percent, that's the main reason for the decrease in revenue.
The real estate tax?
Yes. Correct. The service fees increased because we received $50,000 from Granite Ridge Development for contribution towards traffic signal in the future at the Farland and Rosedale, which was not budgeted. And general government is mainly conditional use hearing fees, zoning fees, engineering fees. And last year, we received more for conditional use hearing fees of approximately $50,000 for a conditional use hearing for Granite Ridge. On the next page, our major revenue items, taxes, are 82 percent of our total revenue and were 8 percent under budget. Revenue was $83,000 lower than last year, mainly due to the taxes being lowered. And the capital expenditures are on target right now. The main expenses that are going to be spent in capital are a dump truck, the PS pump at the maintenance garage getting keyed, and a new floor is going to be put in at the maintenance garage. On the next page is the six-month general fund expenditures. I kind of skipped ahead a little bit there. So the six major categories constitute 83 percent of township expenses. There are fire and emergency services, wages, general government, police expenses, roads, and capital. The police expenses are much higher than budgeted and higher than last year because we did hire a full-time officer, which was not budgeted, and we bought a new vehicle, which was not budgeted as well. And there have been no capital expenditures in the second quarter. We plan to purchase a dump truck towards the end of the year. The next page is the all-other expenses. We have insurance for employees, insurance for the township, maintenance garage committees, building inspections, water systems, the lightway project, service fees, health and human services, which is the SPCA, and conditional use fees.
I have a question.
Yes.
The all-other expenses on this general fund's page says $299,955, and on the page behind it, it says $239,587. So you don't exactly know?
Probably a form left.
Oh, yeah, there must be. The next page is correct, the pie chart must have an error in it.
We'll check that.
Yeah, the pie chart must have an error in it.
Can that be verified or rechecked?
Yes, absolutely. On the next page is the six-month summary of wages. This year, they are 8 percent higher than last year due to some raises and a new employee that we have from last year, you know, different than last year. They cover the supervisors' wages, the road crew storm and overtime, the office, the zoning administration, and the road crew, general wages, and road crew snow, wages, overtime. There are five road crew members, the building inspector, the zoning officer, four office staff, and a couple part-time road crew members included in this.
Lisa, where does the planning commission...
They're under committees.
Committees?
Yes. Back under all-other expenses.
Right. Bill?
Yes.
Now, these are wages exclusive of benefits?
Yes.
What does that mean? Is that this is before benefits are taken out?
This is before benefits are paid in a separate category.
So this is net, not gross?
No, it's...
This is salary.
It's salary, but it doesn't include what's paid for insurance and IRA contributions.
Those parts that are our responsibility?
Right. On the next page, you can see the beginning balance for the general fund was $9,580,000. So revenue so far this year is $1.5 million. The expenditures is $1.7 million. We still have an outstanding loan to the sewer fund for $896,240. So the ending balance is $9.76 million. The township in July did pay back the sewer fund, or the sewer fund did pay back the general fund $50,000, and we plan to pay another $75,000, or another $50,000 before the end of the year.
Does everybody understand what's happening on that note? I'm trying to explain a little bit more.
The general fund had to loan the sewer fund a total year-to-date $896,240.
Basically, why was that?
Because there wasn't enough money in the sewer fund to cover all the expenses.
Now, is this pro-rating from the... Quite sure you expect more revenue, or is that pretty much all the revenue?
This is just for six months. So we still have six more months of revenue to receive.
Right, and when are the real, well, I guess the real estate taxes?
They're pretty much all collected at this point.
So the EIT comes in...
Periodically through the year. So far, to the earned income tax, I believe $1.1 million we received.
So you would expect approximately that much?
We would probably get another million in...
For the second six months?
Yes.
And how about on the expense side, assuming deficit here of $200,000? Do you expect the expenses for the second half to be similar?
No, I expect them to be less because we won't be hiring another police officer in the second half or buying another car. We had a lot of unbudgeted expenses in the first half.
Right, but you'll be paying the police officer?
Yes.
For the second half?
Yes. So I think they'll be less than what they are for the first six months, but they'll still be higher than what was budgeted.
Do you know, Lisa, whether George Beer and the developer for Granite Ridge, whether they're all recorded for PIT at this point, or somehow they missed the cutoff?
They're all recorded.
So we need to...
We had them fill out a form, the form that we created and adopted for each permit, and they've picked up eight permits so far.
So could I just give a little clarity on that? You mean a building permit?
Yes.
That triggers then, well, as far as the...
We have them fill out a form now, which lists who their general contractors are, what the name of their company is, how many employees they have, a whole list of information, and then we take that form and send it to Keystone, who collects the earned income tax and makes sure they're paying the tax.
Right, so how's this 90-day rule operate?
What we decided in the office is we are not going to worry if they're working for 30 or 90. We're making them fill out the form no matter what because it's up to Keystone to determine how long they've been building based on what they submit. Because it's not like, obviously with Granite Ridge, they're going to be here more than 90 days, which they already have been.
Right.
But some of these other contractors, we don't know, and it's not something we can determine, so that's why we have Keystone determine that.
Right, but let's, for example, say hypothetically, the excavator hits the job. Now, if their building permits...
But when they fill out that form, they're supposed to list all subcontractors, including the excavator.
Right, so then suppose the excavator only worked 60 days. Does he and his employees require, they require, to pay the EIT?
No.
Well, then, so is it the individual employee is 90 days, or the individual contractor?
The contractor.
Or the entire contract, or the entire process?
Well, it's supposed to be that the general contractor, who in this case is Funk Brothers, they are registered to pay for everything, but they are also registered with each individual contractor subcontractor if they're not paying for them, which they did. So in that case, each subcontractor is responsible for their employees to file to Keystone.
Right, so I guess what I'm trying to establish is where the 90-day rule, who it falls upon?
Falls upon Keystone. Keystone is the one that deals with it. That's the employer who would raise the question. We haven't been here for 90 days, we don't owe it. Keystone makes that decision. If we don't, all we do is say, you want to work here, part of your responsibility is to record with the local tax collector. And you work out any of your details with the tax collector. All we do is collect the check.
Right, so the various contractors who would work upon the site are already registered with supposedly with Keystone?
Yes.
And then individually, they're held to the 90-day rule?
Correct.
Bill? Can I just follow up on Joe's point, because it's something I hadn't thought of. You get the form, the EIT form filled out, then is Keystone going to send them a tax bill regardless of whether they hit that 90-day window or not?
That's what I understand. Keystone automatically sends them the bill, and it's up to them to prove they weren't there for 90 days.
That's the way it should be, that's good.
Yes.
Lisa, a question on the other side of the earned income tax credit. Are you aware of the school board taking similar actions with their contractors or other matters?
I think, from what I understand, they do not.
In other words, the citizens who are greatly concerned about this side of the activity might also benefit the community by equally pressing...
Very likely.
The school board for their contractors, air conditioning specialists, consultants, people that they hire that likewise may work more than 90 days or not, but do they have, you know, I'm not asking that you would even remotely know, but do they have a form? Do they have a process? Has anyone from the community challenged the school board in a similar way around their contractors?
I'm almost, it's a rhetorical question, I knew that you can answer.
I can find that out. I don't know if anything they have in place. Next, we're going to look at the special funds, which are sewer, open space, library tax, and state fuels. The next page is the sewer fund. The revenue for the first six months was $726,000, and a lot of that was due to the connection fees received from Granite Ridge. The expenses were $468,000, and currently, the sewer fund is showing a positive income of $258,000. On the next page, we have the pump station broken out. The pump station revenue is now being tracked per pump station, and usually, there's about a one-month lag from when we build and we pay the borough sewer bill before we receive reimbursement from the residents. So our hope forward is that each pump station can carry, you know, the revenue can carry the expenditures for each pump station. As you can see right now, they're all a little negative because we're still waiting for some sewer payments to come in, but they are pretty, they're pretty much right on track on what we should be receiving. And you can see that we have the connection fees, and there are $392,000 that we received from Granite Ridge. On the next page, we have the beginning balance of the sewer fund, which was $189,000. We have an additional loan of $75,000 from the general fund, and the revenues were $725,879, and the expenditures were $467,968, for an ending balance of $522,225. As I said earlier, the sewer fund did make a payment back to the general fund of $50,000 in July. And that this year, the borough did increase their sewer rates, which then we increased our sewer rates at the beginning of the year. And for the upcoming billing, the Ashford sewer rates have been increased by the supervisors. The next page is the open space fund. The revenue, interest and open space tax money is total of $427,000, which is 3 percent above budget. The expenses totaled $80,000, which is 12 percent greater than budget, and 44 percent more than last year. The net income was $347,000. The fee and, if you look down, the fee and lieu distribution under expenditures, which was $70,135, that's contributions that are made to the Kennedy Area Park and Rec, the Anthony Nixon Fund, and the senior center. And once in a while, the supervisors make a contribution to KU Little League, and that's what come out of there. The purchases, which was $9,167, was for appraisals, one for the burnt property, the case property, and the cogs' property. So if you look on the next page, the beginning balance is $2.332 million. The revenue was $427,000. The expenditures were $80,000, and the balance is $2.6 million. And at this time, I don't know if the supervisors have any future purchases that they are planning to spend money on or not. They don't have anything else budgeted for this year. On the next page is the library fund. The library fund is income received from the library tax, which is distributed almost as soon as we receive it. The revenue from the library tax totaled $145,000. And it should say it painted to the library was $143,000 in the second quarter, and the net income was $2,000. So, yeah, there's an error on it.
There was a mistake.
So we received $145,000, and we distributed $143,000 this year to the library.
I would like that.
Yes. On the next page, we have the state fund, which includes money to receive for liquid fuels and road turnbacks. The, to date this year, we've received $225,849, which consists of $200,000 for liquid fuels and $25,200 for road turnbacks.
Can you tell us what that means, please? Tell me what that means, please.
Liquid fuels is the money we receive, we receive money, it's about $4,000 per mile for our roads. And every year, the state gives us a certain amount for each mile of the roads, and it increases slightly each year. So last year, we received, well, actually, this year, they went down a little bit. Last year, we received $200,057. This year, the year was $20,596.
What's a turnback then?
The road turnback is all the roads that the township took back from the state over the years. They give us a certain amount of money per road, and that never changes because the township hasn't taken any more roads over from the state.
It goes on for years?
Yes, forever they give it to us.
But it does not escalate, so it's losing competition for us?
And then with these funds, we can only, we can only spend it on certain things like oil and chip, paving, capital equipment, major projects, but they have, like, every year, they change their rules. So we used to be able to spend it on stone, and now you can't. And we used to be able to spend it on gas, and now you can't. So it's specific things we can spend it on. So this year, we're going to spend a major portion of it on paving, the paving which will occur next month. So far, we've only spent $39,000 on oil and chip. So the balance at the end of June is $187,259 in the state fund.
When you say you can only spend it, is that probably the entire state fund, or Joe's road turnback?
The entire state fund. So during the second quarter, we made further changes to the charter account to continue the process of consolidating and improving the priority for reporting purposes. We're still working with the business advisory committee to get the capital fund complete and prepared, and we hope that the capital fund can be ready for the next financial presentation. The upgrades to the comp are missing completely, so we have a little bit, so that one's finished. And the township has selected a website developer, which the communications committee, to update the township website. The communications committee will make a presentation on that shortly. So I will check on that error on the pie chart and get back to you, and then I'll also fix that other on the library, and I'll repost it from the website.
Last page is questions.
In the presentation, under expenses, there's like seven categories of expenses, but there's only two pages detailing those expenses. There's a wages page and the all-other. Is there information on the website that details the expenses in the rest of the categories?
Yes. Yeah, because we, this is just a summary.
That's fine.
Yeah.
As long as it's there, we can go and access it.
Yes.
In some organizations, when categories like, expense categories in particular, exceed the budget by a certain level, a certain percentage, it requires the board to take action to approve the additional variances. Have we got, do we have our own rule for that? Or can we, do we have unlimited expenditures above a budget that we don't have to approve?
We don't have to approve that. Usually, when they change the budget, they have to approve that.
Do they change the budget then during the year?
No.
We can't, no. We could if we...
But they don't.
If we try not to do that.
Well, yeah, but I think his question is, should there be, or is there in place...
Maybe there should be, but there isn't.
A mechanism for forcing confrontation of the variance that develops in the normal operation, so that we budgeted for one level, and then over the course of the year, there was a discrepancy. Am I getting you here directly? At some point, he's suggesting that it would be appropriate to force us to acknowledge that rather than just allowing it to continue on indefinitely, further and further out of sync. Do I, am I on your line?
Correct. A lot of organizations, especially homeowners associations around here, do that. Do that now. You can't exceed the expenses by a certain level without going back to the membership. In this case, you would make a proposal, a formal proposal, to approve the amount over which you budgeted.
And we do, with that, we do. For example, when, so one of the items that we would ever budget on is the police, and they approve that.
So we didn't change the budget, though?
No. But you approved extending over the budget.
The budget is historical for the full, the full year. Our expenses may or may not be above or below. And I would, going further on your idea, Bill, I would suggest that perhaps such review would be necessary within certain limits. You have every little budget overage or... You have every little budget overage or overgrage.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We can't do it line by line item. It's gotta be on a major category.
And that we do.
Yeah.
Because like, like I said, with the police, that was something they approved going over the budget for.
I would like to, to see the business supervisory committee, is that correct?
Advisory.
Advisory.
Not supervisory.
Advisory, thank you. Committee give some thought to that and, and make a recommendation to the board as to, under what circumstances, if at all, we should adopt such a policy.
It could easily be done. And the supervisors, I would think, would want to set out these limits that Bill just spoke about, eliminating all the minute, or minutia categories and expenses, and just concentrate on the big picture. But certainly, that could be done.
Follows him.
On such a meeting. There's many ways you can use budgets as a managerial tool, and what you've done is not wrong whatsoever because you're highlighting the difference from what you thought the year was gonna be and what it is. If you wanna make it variable, where you would say, "Okay, we hired police, now we'll increase that," that tends to, you know, be good information because now you're budgeting a new level of expense, but it also, in a sense, hides information, and people may not like that, too. So I think, what Bill's saying is that you might wanna have different views. They call them budget variances, they call them volume variances, and price variances to get specific, but there's many ways you can look at changes to a budget. So--
Forward to a recommendation from you. Okay. Yes.
I agree with what this gentleman, I'm sorry, I don't know you.
Uh, listen.
Bob Allen. I agree with what he's saying. When you establish a budget, it should be, that is, your budget is set in stone. Things change over time. So I don't think you should ever change a budget because things will vary. You need to hire a new police officer because things change in the township, and it's easily explained. And as long as you can explain the variances in a logical sense, I think it's perfectly fine. I don't think in the real world scenario, budgets set a guideline for you, but they're not set in stone. It's always gonna be variances because real life happens. Yeah, I don't think we should be changing the budget numbers. I don't either.
Leaving the budget, uh, Bill, leaving the budget same throughout the year allows this, this very discussion of a variance at the three-month, the six-month, the nine-month, and the twelve-month point. If you allow the budget to change, then somewhere during the year, later in the year, it may be less visible to the public then because the variance wouldn't be there because it was approved in a meeting somewhere and then someone attending later. So showing the full year difference, well, first of all, I'm gonna commend you for showing the budget and the actual. You know, showing those two numbers, no matter what this scenario is, is very helpful to anyone looking at a financial presentation, and, and it shows that you're holding your own feet to the fire, you know, which is the critical thing. And it shows, I think, holding the budget consistent from the beginning of the year shows your best thinking at the first of the year, whenever you start before the first of the year, that's the first starting the first of the year, and shows your best thinking, and yet, everything could change. And yes, every major decision that might, you might decide to acquire new open space or something that you didn't budget, would you wanna budget this and then not use it? There are so many things that could come up that are good reasons to not be on budget, but that they can be explained every time, in comparison to actual is made. And then not dealing with the budget is, I think, another level of comfortability for the community. Because over, they don't have a historic budget over time. If you compare three years, budget to actual, you'll then, if you have a modified budget for the third year, or start doing that, then gee, it'll look like, I'd say, the supervisors are doing a great job because they're so close to budget on the modified years. I don't mean to criticize that you're not, but, but this way, it'll show always a difference between budget to actual historically over time.
Yeah. Well, to, but again, back to your original idea. Right. I think that the original bill--
I hear a lot of bills in the room.
I think that the, the original bill's concern was not that the budget should be changed, but it needs to be addressed, that there should be some sort of official recognition of the discrepancy at certain points. That's what he was asking to look at. What we as supervisors then do with that is a different question. And, and it's, it's clear from the feedback that, at least at this level of development, changing the budget is, to, to meet the discrepancy is not one of those favored approaches. But there may be other approaches that would be more acceptable. But that Bill's suggesting, he thinks that we should be addressing the discrepancy, and that's what I've asked the committee to address.
For example, the supervisors at a previous meeting about four months ago approved to go forward and go out for bid for Marshall Bridge Road, which is something they have to address because the road is caving in. So it will be a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar expense that's not budgeted, and it's gonna be way over budget. So, and, and thanks to him, the bill, he always helps me with my financial presentation.
Lisa, the, the only category, I think that maybe Joe asked, that had to do with perks for, for the, the employees, hospitalization, those kind of benefits. Where do they appear in here?
They're in general fund under other. All other expenses. There's insurance, employees, employer-paid taxes.
Other.
It's on the--
General fund.
All others. It's broken down.
All other.
Employer-paid taxes and that.
But what, Lisa, what we might wanna consider for the next report, since we broke out wages for this report from General Eberlin, we could re, also break out all the benefits and include that in wages.
Yeah.
So the total--
Thank you.
Total compensation. Okay. I think I probably have to do.
This lady in front of me asked about a breakdown of the categories, and you said they were on the website. Well, thanks to phones. Where is it on the website? Because I, all I can find are these reviews like this. They don't break the individual categories down.
I thought we put--
We'll put them up there.
Yeah, I thought it was up there, and we had the general--
Okay. So it's going up.
No, well, I thought it was up there under financials, but if it's not, we'll make sure it's up by tomorrow.
Super. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Any more questions on the financials? Well, because the one item on our agenda is the proposed discharging of firearm ordinance. Have we kicked this subject around in a good deal? We're not quite ready to advertise it. I raised an issue which has not been resolved yet. I believe, though, that the one change that seems to be quite okay, concerns under restrictions, no discharge between the hours of seven-thirty P.M. and six-thirty A.M. can be changed between dawn and dusk.
No.
No.
Sunset, sunset.
Eight A.M., right. There's another problem here under the restrictions, and it has to do with the no discharge within certain yards of buildings and lot lines. And doing a little bit of math on this, it's very difficult to support this. As an example, if you have a standard two-acre lot, which is eighty-eight thousand square feet, and you take the square root of that, you come to approximately two-hundred-and-ninety feet, which is the length of every boundary of that. Hundred-and-fifty yards can't accommodate that. As a matter of fact, if you do the numbers, you have to have an eight-acre lot to do that. And I don't think that's very reasonable. I'm not sure how to solve it, but I would suggest that we return, send this to the planning commission. We might be able to air it and see how they can accommodate this. And see, under restrictions, no shot, shell, bullet, end or projectile may cross any property line. That would be pretty hard to enforce unless it went through someone's window.
Or person.
Or person.
Not hard for a person.
Again, that, the restrictions have to be worked on, and I don't think this is acceptable the way it's written. Yes?
Those restrictions are in other townships' ordinances. I mean, if, I'm not, I've done some research on this. I don't see anybody challenging those provisions in other townships, or them not being workable in the other townships. Why would we, why, why do we have additional concerns?
I guess what I'm hearing you say from the other ordinances you copied this from, they find those distances within their--
They were acceptable.
But they, they can work. And they can work.
They can.
I, I don't, maybe there's a way somebody can explain how they can work. Yes, in the back.
The possibility exists that a two-acre lot is too small to have a firing range on it.
There we go.
And so there shouldn't be able to work on a two-acre lot.
Correct.
I, I repeat, repeat what I said. You have to have an eight-acre lot.
Good.
Brilliant.
That would be wonderful.
Very good.
That would be wonderful.
I think that's the rest of the problem. George, you haven't said anything yet.
Uh, thank you. I, I could quibble with several portions of the ordinance, but the one thing that I would like to see is that an ordinance passed very promptly. During the last week, as has occurred since this, since our last month's meeting, individuals in several locations have been firing multiple times a week, sometimes for hours at a time. One individual was having a party last night and was firing at eight fifteen, right now, just about eight fifteen, with a long rifle. You can't tell me that person was target shooting at eight fifteen. This was just sheer harassment and the entertainment for his party guests. This is an insane situation. You must pass something quickly.
I had sent out an email to the board of supervisors and to legal counsel earlier today, trying to follow up in a formal fashion what I said at the last meeting, that is, the meeting for work session, and so I wanna read it so that it's, it's officially shared with the community. Again, this was addressed to Lisa, Mike, Bob, and Bob Adams. I wanted to let you know that I intend to raise issues about the firearms ordinance tonight. Basically, an extension of what I raised at the work session. While I acknowledge the state statute on the Uniform Firearms Act, I don't yet know to what extent it is controlling on the issues we are here addressing. I will continue my investigation of that, but do not now feel controlled by it. I'm not saying I have had a chance to look at it a little more closely. I don't think that, for what we're trying to deal with, I don't think it impacts on what we're trying to do. Our ordinance addresses health and safety issues, not noise, and not rights to own. I do not think anyone wants to be awakened by gunfire at six-thirty in the morning. And there may not be enough light to safely shoot at that time, just as there may not be adequate light at seven-thirty P.M., much less at eight fifteen. I think an hour, maybe two, before dusk, as it is defined for each day, should suffice for the evening. Eight A.M. should be the earliest a resident needs to fear of being accosted by firearm noise, risk, and danger. Our draft ordinance does not address safe shooting, such as drinking while shooting. There is nothing linking to zoning laws or building codes. The NRA backstop standards are not incorporated in any relevant portion of this ordinance for either indoor or outdoor application. And I'm distinguishing the commercial application as irrelevant. Those are all important concerns. Age-relevant questions, particularly adult supervision, is absent from the ordinance and should be addressed. Risk from alcohol-related accidents certainly has civil ramifications, just as drunk driving has a civil concern, but each should also have a criminal sanction, as does driving. The same should apply to shooting. Notice to neighbors, at least abutting neighbors, seems appropriate for safety reasons, if not for neighborly courteous behavior in a community. The ordinance as drafted defines firearms to include, among other things, guns and shotguns. And then throughout the ordinance, it uses the phrase firearms and shotguns. This suggests there is a difference under the ordinance, a fact that is not true if the definition applies. Further, I think the definition applicable should include any device that projects projectiles using compressed air, gunpowder, or strings, such as bows and arrows, crossbows and longbows. I think the size of the device is irrelevant, as I think doing so as a commercial venture or a private adventure has no relevance. When I said size, I was referring to the length of the barrel of, if you have a, a black powder target pistol that's got an eighteen-inch barrel, that's outside of the statute as we have it currently drafted. That bullet can kill you just as well as if it came from a twelve-inch barrel. I think this is, the projectiles can still kill and maim, no matter the source or the motivation. Maintaining this artificial distinction between commercial slash dealer and private only encourages residents to establish a commercial venture, but without addressing any of the underlying concerns applicable only to the private player. It encourages the defeat of the purpose of this ordinance. The inclusion of non-gunpowder-driven devices also immunizes, to some extent, the argument that we are picking on gun owners and the use by them of their, of their constitutional right to own guns. It's broader and more inclusive than solely gun owner concerns. The name could then be dangerous projectile usage rather than firearm usage. As apparently Mike also shares his concern, I'm concerned about the meaning of section one-twenty-five dash five, capital F, and per n. The defense of human life, as we've seen from Florida law and practice, can have many meanings. Pennsylvania has a similar right to shoot law. At best, I'd prefer to rely on general Pennsylvania law on this issue rather than to create a murky, uh, to create a murky defense standard that could create additional issues and dangerous exposure. I'm talking about the one section that says you can shoot to save human life. I don't know what that means and how that gets played out, but it's certainly very complicated. As there are no pre-existing commercial ventures, that language is irrelevant and can be deleted. I believe these issues need to be addressed in some fashion. I am strongly in support of this ordinance, but hope to see it tighter and more effective in its outreach for all members of the community. And so I'm gonna get caught with this to include with the minutes. Okay.
Michael, I have a concern about the enforceability of this. I would like to see enforceability in this proposal, and I'm just wondering how it will happen, but, but if you see the example of someone shooting off a gun at eighteen last night, if somebody were to complain to the chief, and he visited that property, and there is no backstop, isn't, wouldn't that be an enforceable issue right there? Couldn't the chief do--
There's nothing they can do.
Not right now. Well, assuming we have this.
If we have this, we have nothing.
Yes, I understand that. But I'm looking at something where the chief can go and say, "You have been firing a gun, your neighbors reported it, you have no backstop on your property. Where were you firing that gun?"
I see your point clearly, and I understand the haste to do this, but I don't know that, I'm terribly comfortable going through the effort of advertising and, and passing this with known flaws in it. George, I just can't do that. Joe?
I would rather see it correct.
Thank you. Joe?
Mike, you mentioned earlier about the distances, and I could be wrong, but I understand the hunting law is a hundred and fifty yards for four hundred and fifty feet.
From a house for a shotgun.
It is.
For a shotgun.
It is.
Let alone a pumpkin ball.
So, I mean, to reduce the standards, just as like, it doesn't make sense.
Hunting is different than target shooting.
I know, but I'm saying the hundred and fifty yards is in the hunting law, and Mike is saying that's too much. No, I don't think Mike said-- I didn't hear Mike say that. I think he said, "The way it's written now doesn't leave many opportunities." I think he said, the way it's written now doesn't leave many opportunities for people to shoot. He wasn't saying we should make it down a shorter distance. I didn't hear him say that.
And I did not say that.
Maybe I did do.
You have a.
He said you can't do it on a two acre lot to be.
You can't do it on a four acre lot. You have a four acre lot, you may not shoot.
Right. So I'm just saying, uh, there should be no reason to reduce the hunting laws. I mean, they're obviously for the safety of their residents.
We're not touching hunting law.
No, I didn't mean to touch the hunting law, but to reduce, it doesn't make sense to reduce what already is a safe distance.
Now, what they were talking about is from property lines, a hundred yards from the property line, whereas for hunting, it's a hundred and fifty yards from the structure.
Right.
So what Mike's talking about is, I'm neighbors with the person that's trying to question, one of them, and he's a hundred and fifty yards from my house for the shooting. But what would stop him from shooting is that if it's a hundred yards from my property line, my neighbor's property line, then he's going to have a little envelope to shoot in. And so what? That's what it is. I'm for that. But that's where I think you were, it's a hundred and fifty yards from a structure, and what we're talking about is a hundred yards from a property line.
Okay.
So my property line, George's property line, Beverly's property line.
Right. It would mitigate the straightforward.
Hopefully, he wouldn't be able to shoot. Let him buy twelve acres.
Not really, because it's a hundred yards plus a hundred and fifty, which is only two hundred and fifty yards. And we all know bullets can go further than two hundred and fifty yards. We're not kidding ourselves.
Well, we're going to remand this to the P C. Any more questions?
I just had a comment. There's a little bit of great interaction between target shooting here and hunting for whitetail deer. Uh, deer hunters, during the gunning season, if they're going to use a gun, in this hunting area, which is called Five C., they, they cannot use rifles at all. And there's many, and there are, there are places in Pennsylvania where they do use rifles. And they've been legalized for many years. They can't use a rifle here. Question is, if they can't use a rifle here to hunt, why should they be able to use a rifle in target shooting? And the range of a rifle is miles if it's pointed in the wrong direction. Uh, secondly, uh, the time. Hunters get out there at four o'clock, five o'clock in the morning, so, and if they're going to use a gun, when dawn comes, they can shoot. And they can shoot right up until dusk, so that supports this dawn-through-dusk, uh, area.
Rather than a time for hunting.
Yeah, rather than a time.
But the time.
And it changes.
The time perhaps should be different for, quote, target shooting versus hunting.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
With all due respect to you supervisors, I really think you should answer Joe Duffy's question, where he said, would you be willing to stand a hundred and fifty yards behind a dead tree with a target on it and let some guy shoot at it?
I won't give you an answer back.
But I did send everybody with the NRA. Did everybody get a copy of that with their backstop?
If you came to answer the question, you can understand how we feel, because that's what's happening.
Yes.
So, I, I looked at the NRA, thought, I have no way to assess whether, you know, if they're appropriate, but they're not currently incorporated.
No.
Um, the second issue instead, or you talk about this too, is that there is an exemption for, um, commercial arms dealers, I guess. I don't even know what the, I can't remember now exactly what it's called. I don't understand why a commercial enterprise shouldn't be held in the same safety standard that a private home would be held to. So that, I just think that we should agree now. It's lead. I don't understand where that's coming from, and that has not been answered. The, the township solicitor responded that it was arbitrary. I think it's arbitrary to exclude them, not to include them. So, is there a reason for that?
Well, I, I can't answer that, but I'm.
Well, I can read to you what the township solicitor says.
I just, I don't understand why it's arbitrary to exclude them.
It would be very useful if you could join in the presentations and the discussions with the planning commission. That's really where I think this has got to take proper form.
I, I think that that's fine. I think some of this needs to be fleshed out, but I think there needs to be definitely done, because I just don't think that we can continue to go to this. I mean, I had, you know, my in-laws over for dinner, eighty years old, eight o'clock at night, were sitting out on my patio. I'm not one of the abutting properties, but they keep targeting. Keep having their target shootings for twenty-five minutes, completely, was jarring. So, and it was too dark. It was dark. And they, they lived on a fifteen acre property in the, in the country, allowed people to hunt on it. They grew up hunting. They are not against hunting for guns, but it was a really, they, they laughed. It was so unsettling.
I understand. Okay. One more comment, please.
It would be helpful to the planning commission if you had some guidance on how broadly you would like us to review this.
But you also.
Not necessarily at this moment, but when it's passed and.
But I just want everybody to understand, say, when the supervisors send it through the planning commission, this ordinance will not be passed for quite a few months.
Well, then, why not?
Why is it going to the planning commission?
That's, that's up to them. I'm just saying, you know, that that's what will happen if it goes to the planning commission. We want the planning commission. Because they will, what they do is they will look at it at their next meeting, which is September third. Then they will all meet to discuss it, and then discuss it again at their October meeting. And so they won't make a recommend, I mean, the earliest they would make a recommendation to the supervisors will be in October, and then I still have to advertise it. So I'm just letting everybody know that if, if it is sent to the planning commission, it will be believed. Not to be believed.
I'd say a hundred and twenty.
More like.
Because they can tell you that it's not going to be, they're not going to make a recommendation.
Is there any expertise at the planning zoning commission about this?
We have to seek it.
About the range.
Ranges or firearms and anything else, I mean, what's the advantage?
We have, we have problems with it. We do have to seek expertise when it comes to engineering. If we're given this, I'm sure we'll have to seek expertise.
Any issue comes with it. One, one last question on this subject, please. Go ahead.
There is a safety committee in the township. Is that in this? I mean, is that stat, like, are there volunteers on it? Because I know there's.
Well, our job in the planning commission, our job in the planning commission will be to draw on the safety committee as well. They're not excluded at all. They'll be included.
I mean, is there any capacity to create, like, a, um, an ex, you know, an ex parte committee or something to just get together on this one issue and work on it more expeditiously? Because the planning commission frankly has other things on their list as well.
Not really.
Not really.
Can anyone go to the.
And also, and also, I can imagine we'll bring in the deer, the deer management group. I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll.
Have a board in the area?
Yep.
But what I, my suggestion. My suggestion for it was going to be that maybe the supervisors could adopt to have something in place and then send it to the planning commission, so at least there's something there, and then it can be amended, since it is a safety issue.
Yeah, why would the planning board feel the same on this? On this? This is the question at all.
I guess the answer on putting any township ordinance together is to get maximum public exposure and input. And until, until that gets resolved, I can't, with all good conscience, vote your pass in ordinance that hasn't been resolved.
For here.
I can't do that. And there's no doubt in my mind that we, we can put pressure on the P C. to work as hard as they can, and there's no reason why they can't meet beyond their scheduled times to do that. And it's up to, it's up to us to put some pressure on it, but more importantly, it's up to you people to put the pressure on them, and you're doing it right now, because we have a couple of people here from the planning commission. Yes.
Sarah Lex, we'd just like to ask the planning commission to consider, when you're developing these boundaries, to consider in your property boundaries and your distances from building, the trajectory of a bullet, the velocity of a bullet, how far it fires, rather than looking at, well, most of our residents are on two acre properties, so everybody ought to be able to fire on their own two acre property. It could be that some properties are just not safe to fire on. So you have to consider the physics of anything that's.
Bravo, Sarah. And then, what other question?
Yeah, I have a question for the chief, and, you know, there may be a lot of discussion, maybe more complex, um, boundaries are done, but if, and I think I heard a hunter say that, you know, hunting's only from dawn to dusk, so why is firing on a firing range any different? And maybe that would be something we could do now, that we all might agree on, and then work at planning zoning with regards to physical boundaries, but at least light boundaries. Because I happen to be out, I live a quarter mile away. I have a recording, a sound recording. I can hear the gunshots that were going on last night, um, in the dark. So I guess my question to the chief is, why is it safer to, any safety difference between hunting at night versus shooting a gun at night for some other purpose?
We have already proposed that it's sunset to eight A M.
Right. And so, so from the past that now, and work on all the other aspects in planning zoning.
But there's no document to do that to. It's just a, a line in a document.
But he's, he's talking about a firing range. These people are not firing in a firing range. They're just shooting in their backyard. There's no firing ranges. We're not talking about firing ranges. And see, technically, if, um, Mike, Mike, I mean, I'm off, we're sending it to the planning commission. I think you guys do a great job. However, you're going to get legal advice on this, guaranteed. And you're probably going to obtain legal advice we did, more than likely. And so, that's, that's just my concern with it. And my, and my thought was, the issues that supervisors have, maybe you could take those issues out, and they could, you know, you guys could adopt an ordinance as soon as September third, at your next meeting. You're, I know we're not supposed to at the work session, but you could. And then the planning commission could also work on it there that night, on the adopted ordinance, and amend it further. For years, long would. Can't be more than thirty days or less than seven.
Okay, so he was trying to advertise.
Because it's not required to go to the planning commission, this ordinance.
Right, so it's still time to advertise it for the first.
Yeah.
I think the idea of expunging the distances might make some sense. We could probably do that.
Voting on what you can agree on, and then.
Well, so you mean remove digits, sorry. The distance of a hundred and fifty feet or both?
The distance, subject to distances, out.
And the other thing that will come out for this will be the F., which is use of firearms for defensive human life?
You know, leave that in until we.
I thought that's the one Scott had the issue about.
Well, I don't, I don't know that everybody has.
You had a question about that.
I, I felt that was proper.
So you did not oppose it. You didn't want my attention to it.
So let's just take those two paragraphs out, and I go forward with it. It's a good idea. Elsie, you have your hand out right now.
What I was trying to say is, for many years, long would gardeners would let the employees come up during deer season, from early in the morning until it's time for the men to come to work, to minimize the deer that were eating everything in the garden. And there was never a problem, all those years.
People don't live there.
People don't eat there, but there are night watchmen around and other people that are on night duty.
But with hunting, with hunting, you're restricted to what weapons you can use against a deer. You don't take an M sixteen or a ten and go deer hunting. You use a shotgun, which doesn't have a distance.
We're also not talking hunting, we're talking about curving.
Well, you're talking about shooting a gun. And about people around.
Sunset at eight A M. No, no hunting. Not in the doing of hunting. This is, this is, other than hunting, we can't change the hunting laws.
Now, what about if the NRA back, what if the NRA backstop, there's a reference in here?
Right, that's right. Like sun, dusk, and all that.
Okay. And one final comment. I'm sorry. If, to consider the distances, I think one thing you should consider is, if you think that having a restriction of so many yards from a property line is not appropriate, like, you need to consider a setback. There should be, at a minimum, a setback where a person cannot construct a backstop within so many yards of an adjoining property. And.
Yes, that would be, please come to the next planning commission meeting, because your ideas are very, very useful, and they are included, they be now, be to.
Okay, take notes, you guys, Bill. If you can't come, just to the planning commission, you can send me an email, I'll give it to them.
Okay, I will.
This is the last comment, please.
Um, the ordinances that have been passed in a state which reference dawn and dusk, reference one hour before dusk, prohibited one hour before dusk, and one hour after dawn.
Exactly.
One hour and after dawn.
Sunrise and sunset. Sunrise and sunset are very specific. Dust and dawn are in the eyes of the.
I'm sorry. That was referenced, and sunrise, sunset, which are given times.
Right.
Okay. With one hour before sunset, which gives you that dusty period, and one hour after sunrise, which gives you that, that buckaroo in front of you.
Okay, we have some other business.
You guys said eight A M.
Yeah, enough at six o'clock in the morning.
So what's decided is that we're going to use the distance.
I'm sorry, we're in enough debate this year and now, okay? Everybody's had plenty of time to talk here, repeating ourselves, and I appreciate everybody's interest in this. But we were going to forward this to the planning commission, excluding anything about distances, and it will say that the timing will be from eight A M. to sunset.
Why not a time at night, if you're going to have a time in the morning?
There are a couple of things that are going on here that I'm a little bit confused on. I, I, I don't think I heard people saying, get rid of the, the distances. I thought you said you were taking the distances out of the statute.
Right. That's going to be the issue of the planning commission to get this. There's a need to pass this ordinance soon.
Why not present it with the distance?
We all want it. I'm sorry, I'm going to go to new business now.
You're taking the easy way out.
How many people here are about this, or hear about this?
You all three are up here also.
So what if, so what if you guys, what if you guys approved it on September third with the distance, and the planning commission researched it and found that the distance weren't, they were too stringent, and they recommended to change?
Oh, let's try it.
Did you guys hear what Sarah Lex said? That's what I just said. Do you hear, Sarah? How far does a bullet travel?
I agree. Try it with.
That's what I just said. I said, I tried it, and the planning commission does their research.
Why don't we do it?
Fine, yes. That's what I just said.
Agree.
Yes, leave it in. Leave it in.
So we need to go to new business. We have a.
We're not done.
In this area, it isn't.
With all due respect, we're not done.
I know we're not done, but we can spend from here to midnight on this subject, and we'll never resolve it.
We can, and we can hear our voices.
I will not recommend it. It can't be two against one, if that's the way it wants to be.
Scott, what do you guys think?
You know, I just read a long, long email about areas of concern, none of which have been part of this discussion, except for the time.
Right.
And so, I'm very reticent to be doing something quickly on the spur, not spur of the moment, but quickly, and I hope that we have something in place, and then we'll amend it down the road. I mean, I think that's a very valid approach in some cases, when you can fine tune and smooth things out, but the distinctions, the differences that, between that and what I was talking about, and what the community is talking about, is rather substantial to put it through now, and then hope that we can amend it at some point, six months down the road. And I'm, and I'm very, very cognizant of the concern that is expressed by all the members of the community, that we need to do something three weeks ago, not three weeks after. I mean, I'm very sensitive to that. But I'm concerned that, once we have something in place, the fine tuning of it should be fine tuning, not, not really needing to completely chop it apart and restructure it. And that's what I'm feeling like we're at. It's not fine tuning, it's a, it's, we're using chisels on this, we're not using sandpaper, is what we're going to have to do. So I'm very concerned about making those kinds of decisions right now.
So you prefer to let nothing happen, or what?
No, I'm not, that's not what I said. I'm not happy about that. But I'm, I'm really in a real quite mind, frankly, as to when it should happen, how it should happen, what should be covered. Should we ban rifles outright? Because you don't do it, you can't, you can't hunt with rifles.
Makes sense.
And that obviously stands under Pennsylvania law.
Makes sense.
But, once we have this thing in place with only firearms, and not all the other kinds of projectiles that can blind you, or do other things to you.
Kill you.
And you can hunt with air guns, so, they're dangerous. We don't touch that at all. There are issues here that I think need to be addressed.
Any further comments?
When can we address them?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Rich left. Can we pass just the dusk to dawn part, and just forget about all the other parts that are apparently more complicated?
What would be included with dusk to dawn? What can you do or not do with dusk to dawn?
Well, just like, just like hunting, you can discharge a firearm. It's not a perfect solution, but it would be, it would be something. And then, planning zoning could spend time and effort as well, as you would also, in terms of trying to get a more complicated ordinance in place. Just a thought, because it seems to be something that everyone agreed on, dusk to dawn.
But, everybody agrees with dusk to dawn. But the issues that are brought up, with the exception of last night, where it was eight fifteen, and there was a civil war reenactment going on. But other than that, most of the episodes we've heard, were going on during the day. No? So it's dusk to dawn, and that's it? You're happy with dusk to dawn?
No.
Scott, you can't, you have to have a whole pledge ordinance. What I would recommend is, you come up with what you can pass as commission, you know, maybe we do that at the next planning session. I don't think it's fair to the planning commission to delegate figuring the whole thing out without better direction and clarity, on which pieces you want them to look at. But I also don't think it's acceptable for them to go for another one hundred and twenty days. I mean, I've stopped sending them to Lisa, but it's very easy, on a weekly basis, to do a search, and find out multiple instances of people having bullets that were home. A little girl was shot, at her pool in Michigan last week, by a neighbor who was shooting, part of shooting. So, you know, three hundred yards away. So, it's not acceptable to just let it go. But I also don't think, from a legal perspective, it's acceptable to just give the planning commission the job of figuring out what you guys should figure out. That's not fair to them, to give them just, let it figure it out now, without better direction.
Well, I'm available, I'm saying to, to my, my compatriots here, I'm available between now and the work session, to get together and try to hack out some things. And with the idea that we come forward with a, a better approach for a, a more finely tuned ordinance.
I think you have a clock, though, and that requires a clock.
Something, well, if the supervisors and I can get together this week, and come up with a final draft, then we still have time to advertise.
I'll make myself available.
Okay. So that's what we'll try to do.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think I said this before, but let's go to new business. We have a revised tree list, which I believe has been circulated. This is a list of acceptable trees, like the various types of applications. This has been drawn up by our landscape architect, and who else?
The EAC, and the planning commission.
This is advisory, it's just something that we feel is reasonable, and should be available to anyone in the township that wants it. Okay, we are going to, communication committee has suggested that we get our website updated, upgraded, and that's going to be done in the near future.
Don the watchman has a short statement.
Do we need action on it?
Yes, you do. You need to approve the selection. As memo that was sent to you by Lisa shows, that we had filtered through seven recommendations of website developers, local, regional, and international, selected three for a final phase selection process. And those three resulted in four-year estimated costs of between forty-seven thousand dollars to thirty-one thousand nine hundred dollars to forty-two hundred dollars. And many people don't, don't know that this township has never had a professionally designed website, and so we thought that going with the two national quotes of the thirty-one thousand and the forty-seven thousand, would have been a huge jump for this township, not even thinking about the cost, it would be complex. And we're not even on this learning curve yet, to figure out what the township really needs, as far as a website, and how we can measure value of what the residents feel about it, and what it means to the township. So, the communications committee has voted for Nuts and Bolts. They're a Newark, Delaware, local company, very accessible. They have produced the Kennet Square website, they have produced the Historic Kennet Square website, and numerous others locally. And we think this little firm can do us a very fine job, at a very reasonable cost, that we want the word decision to move forward with an expense of forty-two hundred dollars.
Wait till we have, talk about that.
I got a basic question, which moment our current site does you feel, in ten words or less?
Nobody's visiting it. That's point one. We have Google Analytics on it, and have been measuring the visitations for several months now. And we get twenty-five people a day, who stay on the site for one minute, that's a lot. It's a very cumbersome site, there's a search routine in the site, it's difficult to find things, it's disorganized from the standpoint that certain things are in one page area when the remnants or other parts of it are in another page area, and the lack of readership shows why we need to have an upgrade.
Bill, what's the estimated cost of the permit?
Forty-two hundred dollars, that's it. And we, twenty-one hundred dollars is a down payment when we start work. The site can be upgraded and populated in four to eight weeks. That will mean some work for our committee, because we're going to have to do some reformatting and reformation on the current site to make it more presentable, and I think we're willing to do that.
Okay. Scott, do you have any comments on this?
Well, I have what was circulated, including a page that was presumed to be, I don't think it's the fourth, yeah, two pages.
The marker.
The marker. That's the second page of the marker. Whatever. I have, I have full faith in the committee, I think that it's appropriate to move forward, and so I would support the recommendation.
Okay, do we need, I'm just about, I move that we approve this expenditure to upgrade our website. Anybody second that?
I guess.
Further discussion, if you want a favor, say.
All right, all right. Too late.
Well, you said a moment ago that, that you would entertain comments from the public at some point.
I lied.
By the move to Washington DC or something.
Have you had something to say, Bill?
I, I realize that you were going to vote on it, which is what I was going to say, and that there was no information, I believe, in the packet, supervisor's packet, available to the public.
You mean there's no agenda?
Well, the agenda says website upgrade.
There was not any information, because this, along with the Bike Way project, came up this weekend, and the supervisors agreed to let these two items be on the agenda. So they were not on the original agenda.
Well, it's very hard for the public to have any comments, which is...
It's not a terribly complicated subject, I think we're all up to.
I didn't say it either, both of them.
Well, a township that prides itself on its volunteer efforts by many people, no doubt within our township, there are people who would like to design a website, or contribute to the modification of a website on a volunteer basis. That would be ingrown, and would have a high interest in doing that. Why isn't that one of the options we would consider? Rather than going to an outside specialist, to, you know, somebody who then becomes a knowledge point, where we always have to then refer to, when any time we want to modify something or do something.
No, I appreciate what you're saying, but if we go to a volunteer, and you have a very good point there, we have no, no firing capability, we cannot establish deadlines, and it's, it's a better idea to keep it somewhat at arm's length.
One of the reasons why the trophy gets, is that it's a scrap head and a platform, it's on WordPress, which is a very popular, very teachable, very usable by everybody in the community, the employees.
Functional.
Functionality. To me, that was really huge, because I did not want to get into a proprietary situation, where someone had to learn someone else's works. WordPress is used by thousands of people in this community.
I sat in on the presentations, and I was very impressed with them.
Yeah. My concern to, to direct an answer to your question, why don't we just let volunteers do it? It was my understanding, when the concept of a communications committee was first pondered and formulated, was that there had been various efforts at volunteers coming in to do this, and they'd last six months and disappear. Now, that isn't the way it works with planning commission, it's not the way it works with the safety committee, and a lot of other committees. But for some reason, and I couldn't be, because I wasn't a part of it, so I don't know what was going on, but there were several permutations of a communications committee and a group reworking on the website, and it never seemed to maintain cohesiveness and longevity. And so, when that's going on, it makes sense to me to focus on, on the professionals doing the job that we need to get done.
Can I add to that? One thing I should have said, and didn't, is that we have a volunteer paid for piecework, doing the site. She's not a professional in this endeavor, and she was invited to bid, and she decided not to. But, the new website platform with WordPress, as Bob says, is going to be built with a content management system. That means that Lisa, Megan, Sarah, Kathy, and you three, and committee chairs can edit the website directly, without going to the outside party. That will save a lot of time and effort on Lisa's part, and it will be more productive that way.
I just have one comment, yeah, two comments. One is, that, you know, when you buy the, Bob, you buy smaller venue company, any times you buy similar regularities and service, it can happen, because many times it's an entrepreneur owned company, something happens to that single entrepreneur, there goes your service and backup that you might have had. And secondly, if I heard right, I heard bids of forty-one thousand, thirty-six thousand, and four thousand dollars. In my business, in engineering, when I see that disparity in bids, I got to wonder, either who was asked to bid, or why is there such a great disparity in the numbers? And sometimes you get what you pay for.
Well, we, I think if you look at the Kennet Township, or the Kennet Square website, and Historic Kennet Square, you'll see that they are both very user-friendly websites. Bob made a key point, that this is on WordPress. Bob and I can manage WordPress. WordPress can be managed by thousands of other people. This guy could go out and, go out and business in six months, it doesn't affect our website at all.
Were the other ones not WordPress?
They, no, not at all. They were proprietary platforms, and that gave us a little issue because of that. And it wasn't so much on the development fee to put the website up, it was populated, but these companies make their money on annual maintenance, from four thousand dollars a year, and six thousand dollars. And they require hosting. We can host with Pegasus, we're hosting with Pegasus right now. We don't need to host with Nuts and Bolts. So, we feel very confident that this will produce a website which will be much more organized, and will start to take a read on what the township residents want, and we can do the modification to make sure it's a very usable website.
It is night and day difference, you're right. Because the one was more of a, calling it a content management system.
Yeah, we're not there yet, we're not big enough for it. Just that pricing, so you can find it, WordPress got for twelve grand, you know, I don't know, it just, it just seems strange to me.
We're allowed to take on more work than what the other ones are going to allow us to do too, because we'd have to learn their system to do the work. So a lot of that difference is our own volunteer time is going to make up a lot of it.
The next item on our agenda under new business is the Route 52 Bike Way request for funding, and John, you have the four, please.
We have a report on this, and other related projects at the July bid, July 15th. And we made a statement at that time, that we were out for bid on this project, and the bids were due on August 15th, which is last Thursday. I've distributed the package to the four supervisors, I'm just going to, because it's late hour, get the highlights of that. The reason we're back tonight, Tom, Neil, and I, we're running the project, is that we did get the bids in on August 15th, Thursday. On Friday, PennDOT notified us that we're short of funds, because bids came in higher than what everyone expected. In fact, we're short of funds by a hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So, Tom and I consulted with Gilmore Urban Engineers, who did the design work, and PennDOT, they were saying, so what do we do now? We're a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars short. PennDOT explains to us that we are in a position... So, uh, Tom and I consulted with Gilmore Urban Engineers who did the design work and Pendott, as I say. So what, what do we do now? We're a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars short. Pendott, uh, explains to us that we are in a position, it may turn out we're in a favorable position actually because of the fiscal year about to end, that we should present an offer to Pendott as to the township's willingness to make up some part of that shortfall of a hundred and forty-one thousand. The idea is if we can work out an arrangement to cover that cost, then the project will move forward on schedule. Pendott points out that we can cover, we can choose to cover all of the hundred and forty-one thousand, none of the hundred and forty-one thousand, or something in between. And they give us very little guidance except to say that they would like us to consider what we can afford. Now, in this whole project, which has gone on since two thousand and five, about eight years, we're finally at the point where they go out for bid. During this period, we've had costs going up and down, developing more scope, they went down, you'll see in the last page here, we were, the major material cost here is asphalt.
Yeah.
And one of our estimates was made in two thousand and eight, if you can remember, then the oil was a hundred and thirty-five dollars a bar, a bar. And that blew our whole project away, so, but anyway, it's down a little bit from there, but it looks like it's headed up. So, we really learned more from, uh, our discussions with Pendott. So, the question is, should township consider and make an offer to, to Pendott? Again, traditionally, this, this project has been run with an eighty, what they call eighty-twenty ratio. Eighty percent of the funds for this construction and the inspection are coming from Federal Highway Administration, twenty percent basically from the township. So, in my thinking, that, that's a, uh, a good faith effort if you continue that pattern of twenty percent, one-fifth of the township, four percent from others. The low bidder was Scott Building Corporation, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, and that's, that's where the discrepancy comes in. What I am suggesting, suggesting here is that when we look at Kennet Township's ability to pay, I think it is fair for the township to stick with either that, stick with the eighty-twenty ratio. Pendott also makes this point, they want us to make a single offer, there's no negotiation, and they will consider it and let us know. Seems like a strange way to do business, but Pendott way, I believe. Furthermore, I, I looked at this thing a little more carefully, and, and this is my really final recommendation, that we offer twenty-five percent. That, that goes to show that township is going beyond the traditional eighty-twenty, seventy-five, twenty-five. I figure if Pendott did not have money, and apparently, this is back to the fiscal year bid, they look at all their projects, they haven't spent all of them, and they got a pool of money. If we ask now, and this is why they ask for an offer soon, they have to submit for this fiscal year, August twenty-eighth is the deadline. So everything, you know, it's falling right in place. So if we do twenty-five, seventy-five, the township would pay thirty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, and Pendott would be asked to provide a hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six.
John, if they say no, do you have a chance to go back?
Well, not from the way they discuss it with me. I guess we would rebid the project next year, something, I, I don't know what would happen. Uh, the other point I want to make here in the discussion is that we've already put a hundred and sixty thousand dollars into this, that's going to be matched with other efforts. And I think that, uh, you know, I think the cost is the cost, and I distributed, did they get...
They did.
You can see all the detail in there, things that they're spending the money on.
So how much higher was the other bids?
Uh, that's about what I'm getting, there were five bids presented?
Eight eighteen and eight ninety-eight, I think it was.
Well, let me, let me finish here. There was one bid for, uh, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, but it was rejected because the, it was improper bid, that is. They had so many contractors, subcontractors, Pendott said they're really not in charge, they're just a broker or something. Then they had the, uh, the other three, I ran these numbers off, eight hundred, eight eighteen, and eight ninety-eight, and then there was a fifth one for one million, two-hundred-and-thirty So Pendott picked just the lowest bid. Anyway, I outlined in there the, uh, kind of a breakdown of a hundred and sixty thousand that we have into it. And I, I, again, you know, it was, uh, sort of a last-minute thing last month, and there we are at the same situation. I, I think we can make such an offer to Pendott, just a letter from the township manager would suffice that Pendott tells us if you decide to approve some amount, and then they would have time to, uh, fully consider this within what they're describing to me as a year-end real allocation of funds that Pendott has. So, again, I, I think we have a pretty good chance of getting that hundred and five thousand if we make such an offer.
Yeah, I'll maybe ask you two questions.
Yes.
Or comments perhaps. The first is, although it's a big chunk of change, and appears a little bit more notice this time than last month, I thank you for that.
Few hours, I mean.
Um, the, the fact is, we're in for a nickel, we're in for a dime. I mean, we've got a lot invested already, and if we don't do this, everything is gone. So that really makes the, the decision process very difficult, or, or biting, more biting. That, that's the one thing. But the other thing is, if I understand this correctly, and I, um, Lisa was trying to fill me in during the day, so I had a better picture of how this is playing out, is I understand it, if we do this, and if Pendott buys into our scheme, I don't mean in a pejorative way, then this ends the Route Fifty-two, uh, Kennet Township shoulder project. This will wrap up this whole effort in eight years. Do I understand that correctly?
But, well, it, it does from the financial side, and it, and it creates firm contracts.
Works that has to be done.
And the work would be done probably in the spring, or we've encouraged them in our informal discussion to do it in the summer, just because of traffic.
They have an end date, anyway.
The end date is October next week.
October fourteenth.
Uh, but that, you're correct, it, it will complete the entire involvement in this thing, bringing the eight years to a close per the design, plan, specification, and estimate that was done by, uh, urban engineers and approved by Pendott on July eighth, if it's like, I mean, that month, so.
Thank you. I share your, your saying, even for a diamond for a dollar or higher money.
One dollar money to...
And I echo, uh, the things that John had said, you've come so far and we're so close, um, I just think we cannot afford not to do it. I'll give that any comments.
I move, I move we approve that, thirty-five thousand.
We'll have to second that.
Two hundred and forty-two and nineteen cents?
They wanted to the penny. I, I decided that you depend on why they always go to the penny. Because I'm an absolute state...
There's a motion on the...
Doesn't look like a, a valid enough number yet.
I'll hold the vote, Tom. There's no, nothing lost by not doing it, and if we don't do it, we lose the whole project now anyway.
Exactly.
So, you know, why not give it a shot? And we're not going to lose the money by doing it.
I guess it's still to the profit.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I think you're setting a record for perseverance. Just really appreciate it. Next on the agenda, which would be quite short, I'll read it. Current activities under the work, um, the second round of buying, uh, the roads and banks has been, banks have been completed. Yard waste pile was chipped by Weaver Mulch and hauled away at no cost to the township. The pile was one year's worth of debris. The contractor asked that the leaves and grass be separated from the brush, so a leaf and grass pile will be started. Fuel pumps are being upgraded to key, and the maintenance garage will, will make it easier to fill each vehicle. Wood chips are being hauled to residents as they call, and I urge you to do that. Trees down this month were on Sills Mill, Rosedale, Brown Hill, and East Hill and Dale Roads. All were chipped and hauled away. The vehicle for the codes official was prepped and serviced. Drain pipes were installed on several roads that are to be paved this year. Nine Gates Road drainage took a great deal longer than expected due to, uh, the, um, rocks that we encountered. The paving program is running behind due to the rain, the contractor is planning to pave in September. Sewer pump station repairs this month was at Ashford due to electrical problems and manhole work, and at Victoria Gardens due to a pump switch and other electrical problems. The Red River Crossing on McFarland Road is scheduled this month to be replaced. It will take three to four days, a tour will be, will be posted. Sections of McFarland Road will be closed between Hillendale and Rosedale Roads for construction at Bennett Ridge. Residents will be notified and a tour, detour will be posted, local traffic will be permitted. Upcoming jobs include paving, shoulder work, mowing, and trimming of trees. That's the end of the report. Okay, Bob, it's up to...
We have three request for extensions, speak until January twenty-fifth next year, have until November twenty-seventh in Burris Ridge West, until September twenty-eighth. I move we approve those three extensions.
I'll second that. Questions? Questions? No questions? I call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, are you all public commented out?
I'm sure you like that.
They all left.
How do you pave next month?
I've already mentioned that also.
Nine Gates.
Yes.
So Nine Gates isn't done yet, it's still...
No. Just the drainage was, drainage was put in, temporary patch on top.
It's not closed, huh?
Yeah, we said we reopened it.
There we go. Um, Hillendale's being paved and...
Which section?
Rosedale.
From, Hillendale's being paved from Farman to Creek, and then it's also being paved from right out here down to, um, Fifty-two. And not only to Greenwood, to Greenwood. And, um, there's a couple, I think, um, Longwood Road, I think you got it, but I'll send you a whole list. I can't think of all the comments.
I'll take a day or two.
Usually.
Usually, yeah. They usually here for like a week.
Okay, any other comments? I move we adjourn.
Page the bills.
Hey, um, Studd and Bobby and Mike, so we're inside, we're all down after tomorrow morning, Wednesday morning.
Yeah.
I will come tomorrow.
Okay. About Wednesday.
Me, if I can be here.